We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council. Begin tonight's meeting with evocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We ask you to guide our minds and our hearts as we make decisions in the best interest of the city of Lima. We ask you to watch over all of those in the city and help us to lead prosperous lives.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here.
First, tonight, we have Resolution 1114.
Memorializing the late John Jack Joseph Greedorn, outstanding Lima citizen, and extending condolences to his family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Resolution 1114 be adopted on its first reading after being read.
Second. The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 1114 on its first reading after having been read. I'll have the clerk read the resolution.
Whereas, on March the 10th, 2014, the entire Lima community was saddened by the death of John Jack Joseph Greedorn, former Lima policeman and outstanding citizen. And whereas, Jack, as he was known by his friends, served three years in the National Guard and four years in the United States Air Force during the Korean War as an air police officer. And whereas, on June 15th, 1955, Jack Greedorn was appointed as a patrolman with the Lima Police Department. In 1964, he was promoted to detective. In 1969, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And on June 14th, 1976, Sergeant Greedorn was appointed to the rank of lieutenant. Lieutenant Greedorn received a meritorious certificate for a distinguished achievement award in 1972 for assisting with defusing a bomb placed near a school. Jack Greedorn retired from the Lima Police Department in 1992 after more than 36 years of service. During his tenure with the Lima Police Department, he served under two chiefs of police and six mayors. And whereas, Jack was an avid fisherman, enjoyed traveling, and was a devoted husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, brother, and uncle. Whereas, it is the desire of this council to recognize the valuable contributions of John Jack Joseph Greedorn to the Lima Police Department and to the city of Lima. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Lima, Ohio, that the Lima City Council hereby acknowledges the many contributions of John Jack Greedorn to the city of Lima, which have and will continue to benefit our citizens, and that the council on behalf of the entire community expresses its condolences to his family and friends.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
Know the family for quite a number of years, and I can tell you that Jack was well-loved, not only by the family, but the patrolmen that he served with. You know, I talked to several of them that served with him that are now retired, and he was a patrolman's patrolman. He worked with them every day. He was a little bit gruff, but I tell you, when he got done, they knew exactly what he meant and where he stood. He was on their side, he worked with them, and he spent 36 long years with our police department. And you know what? That alone is by far a great achievement. So, to the family, I know I've told you before, I'm sorry for his loss, for your loss, but overall, the city lost. The city lost a great individual. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say, I remember in 1990, when I first came on council, and at that time, I was young, I didn't have a head full of gray hair. Jack was one of the elder police officers, and while you might say I was green, wet behind the ears, even maybe even a snot-nosed kid, he never stopped and hesitated to give us advice. When you first come on council, it's a little bit of a challenge to get a full understanding of the police department and what the officers on the street and the sergeants have to deal with. And a lot of things that they deal with, they don't talk about. They don't probably talk about it to their kids until they're much older. Perhaps themselves and their spouse are the only ones they share some of the things that they deal with. But very early on, before he retired, Jack spent time with me, helping me to understand the real things that happened in the police department. And I'm forever grateful for that. Again, I'm sorry for your loss, for the city's loss. I'm extremely happy that we had his service for the number of years that we did. So, if there's no further discussion, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Resolution 1114 has been passed on its, adopted on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. If Representative the family wants to come forward.
We are genuinely grateful for the recognition received tonight in honor of our loving family member, Jack Greedorn. For those of you who knew him professionally, he was truly a man of honor and most certainly a law officer with a strong moral character. When he retired in 1992, his letter of resignation noted that he was always so very proud to have had privilege of serving for the finest police department in the country. And to his dying day, there was never a time in passing a police vehicle that he did not wave or acknowledge. The patrolling officer in some manner. Excuse me. He loved his job and dedicated his professional life to serving those in our Lima community. For those who were blessed to know Jack Greedorn personally, he was truly a humble and gracious man. He was a very loving and devoted family man and a loyal friend to all. He was the cornerstone of our family and additionally served as a loyal friend to all. He was the greatest protector that we ever had, and we know, we have no doubt that from heaven above, he will continue to protect, guide, and watch over his family and his friends, his fellow officers, and our Lima community. We are so very proud of him and will ever love him. On behalf of Jack Greedorn and our entire family, we sincerely thank the Lima City Council members for honoring his services. Tonight's tribute will remain in our hearts forever. We thank you so very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much for staying here for us.
Next on the agenda is privilege of the floor, Lonnie Hobson.
Goodbye, thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Hobson. Thank you.
The other day, I had a problem with my alarm system for my house. It was, I had an electrical problem. It went off, a noise to me. The two officers showed up, which I'm grateful for that. But to reply to this, is this saying that the one-time deal with my alarm is okay, but now I got the system put in because it's supposed to help the police department, okay? And then I get a letter here saying that if I get another alarm, I'm going to be charged. Now, you kind of got me baffled here because with the alarm, it helps everybody. Why would I be charged for something that's helped from the public? And the police officer, they'd be down by my house all the time. So, this ain't like it's out their way. And then the week before, I had just heard that on the TV, on the news, that people was breaking into people's houses in the afternoon. So, should I disconnect my alarm, wait for somebody to break in, and then call the police? Or should I keep paying the alarm? What should I do here? I'm wasting money with the alarm if I'm going to get charged.
Okay. Mr. Hobson, normally, we don't get into dialogue during this, okay? But I believe that the policy or the ordinances state that if there are multiple false alarms, okay? And you were given a notice, not a fine, correct?
This time, yes.
Okay. And the purpose of the letter is to let you know, in case you weren't aware of the policy, that if you have multiple false alarms, then they can charge you. Now, if there were an actual break-in, I don't believe we charge for that, okay? I mean, if it's set off by somebody doing something untoward, okay? And the history of that is, at one time, when we went into that, there were multiple, and the technology was different 15, 20 years ago, but there were multiple false alarms going on that were tying up resources of police officers, okay? And that's why we went to that policy. And I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, is that an ordinance or is that in one of the ordinances? I think it is. Okay? But that's why we went to that, was unlike yourself, there were some folks that were just kind of willy-nilly about how their alarm system operated, and if there was a problem, did nothing about it, just said, oh gee, it was a false alarm. And that's where this policy came into place, okay? But you've said that you've identified the source of the problem.
Yeah.
And you've got it corrected.
Yeah.
Okay? So, the likelihood of having another false alarm is diminished.
I hope so.
Okay?
It's electronic, you know.
Well, I understand that, okay? But I also think that in the same time, in the ensuing years, alarm companies have become aware of this and have gotten better with their technology and everything else, too. Okay? But I will tell you this, you're not the first to get that letter, okay? Many, many have been sent out over time.
You know, this is a little something where you ought to think about. That commercial that you got, "I'm black, man." You know, we got one black in Lima. That's offensive.
We'll move on to the consent calendar. Mr. Tevin.
Mr. President, I move that Item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and Items B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and that Items B, C, and D be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation allowing for emergency sewer work.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number one be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to allow for the purchase of computers.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Mayor regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Energy Management Solutions Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number three be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From Chief Martin regarding legislation to dispose of city surplus through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding new permit for Elm Street Market at 650 West Elm.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication number five be received and filed, and the clerk authorized to file with no objections with the Ohio Board of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number five and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that Communication number six be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication number seven receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Insight Pipe Contract.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number eight be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number eight. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro if he could come forward, and it's, the communication called out a Project 7-14, and I had asked him earlier today if he could give us a listing.
Mr. Elstro.
Mr. President and Council, this project, the cured-and-place pipe liner project, is going to affect five primary areas. A section of South Pears between Spencerville Road and Lakewood, Central Avenue between Ninth and Tenth Street, McKenzie Drive at Cornell, and to the east, Blackburn between Merritt and Spring, and Pears between Wayne Street and Oakland Parkway. Essentially, what this is, is a result of the stormwater inspection work that we've done over the past couple of years. We've been commissioning people to televise and assess our stormwater segments of sewer. What we have found in these sewers is that there are longitudinal, longitudinal cracks approximately at 12 o'clock, 3 o'clock, and 9 o'clock. What that means is that the structural integrity of these pipes are beginning to fail. We can secure this by the cured-and-place product. It is essentially a product that is inserted into the sewer pipe, expanded, and then it's hardened, and it remains in place. It blocks out any kind of cracks where roots are infiltrating, and roots, of course, are causing clogs and backups in these line, in these lines, so it will lower our maintenance costs. And also, by putting this liner in, it prolongs the life of the sewer pipe itself. So, we can anticipate we will probably get another 40 to 50 years out of these lines rather than the very expensive track of going through and digging these lines up in maybe five or six years and replacing all these lines. So, it's a little bit of preventive maintenance on our part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Mr. Howard, I just want to ask a question. Is this a chemical going in the line? Because you know, that question will be, you guys tested our safety, because you putting a chemical in the line?
No, it's not a chemical.
It's not a chemical?
It's a, I believe, a resin product.
Oh, okay.
It'll look like a large bladder that this contractor with specialty tools as well as knowledge and techniques will slide this membrane through a section of sewer, then they will inflate it and cure it in place. So, there won't be, it's not a chemical application.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works and Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to advertise and enter into contract for the sale of scrap metal.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number nine be received, filed, and that the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number nine and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works requesting legislation to modify Chapter 864 of the codified ordinances.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number 10 be received and filed, and the law director authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number 10 and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
The agenda only stated the Chapter 864, and I wanted Mr. Elstro to give more detail, to inform the public as this is being replayed, what this pertain to, and especially with the warm months coming up.
President and Council, thank you, Ms. Adams, for the question. What this is, is a proposal by our department to allow garage sale permits to be applied for online. We have about 300 customers come to the Building Department and Permit and License Office each year seeking garage sale permits. If council recalls, these permits are a way that we keep track of individual garage sales. I believe the ordinance says that you can have no more than three sales per season. I think at the time the ordinance was put in place, there was some concern because some households had continuous yard sales year, nearly a year long, and that was and can be offensive to neighbors. In an effort to try to streamline services as well as be customer service oriented, what we have found is with the existing software that we now have with the Building Department, we can set up some templates where people can go to the city's webpage. We'll be able to access a portion of that page and apply online for garage sale permit. The benefits to the person who wishes to hold that garage sale is obviously it's going to save the applicant travel time, fuel, there will be no waiting in line, and it avoids postage and preparation cost on our part. It will also reduce the length of customers in line trying to take out permits for building, whether it be residential or commercial. If you would come up to our office in the busy season, you would see perhaps one or two or even three persons trying to take out garage sale permits, but in line with them will be architects, engineers, and building contractors waiting to apply for their permits to do work so that they can keep their businesses rolling. So, it will, we plan that this will shorten the line at the building counter. If somebody applies online, it would be entered electronically, so our staff can handle it much more efficiently, much more quicker, and it avoids the necessity of a city employee taking that paper application and then putting it in the electronic system. So, we think this is really going to be a benefit to your constituents as they decide to hold garage sales. We are proposing for the online feature that we waive the fee, an extra incentive. If you get online and apply, it helps us reduce staff time, but it's going to save them time, and we'd like to see people take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro. Is there any further discussion? I was going to say that this is, I mean, you talk about a small example, but a huge benefit, and it's just common sense. In today's technology, it's, I applaud your department for coming up with this idea because it really will help flow in the office.
Sure.
I would challenge other departments, if there's opportunities for this type of change and advancement and processing it, to look at those and come forward with it. So, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Petitions.
An alley vacation in the 1,000 block of West Elm Street, petition for by Marcia and William Mann.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that the petition be received and filed, and that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, that the clerk calls publication of the legal ad and notify abiding property owners of the public hearing to be held on June 9th, 2004, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
The motion, the second, is stated by Counselor Miles. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Reports of committees. Utilities. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a meeting on the 17th of April discussing the garbage contract that we're going to have upcoming. We talked about several different examples of maybe changing it, but these two contracts that we looked at over the last 10 years are pretty well-defined, they're pretty extensive, and they give our, our community a very good roadmap. If we change carriers, it gives them a roadmap. So, we've talked about any changes that we might look at, and maybe even some extensions that we could put in the contract, but if any of you have any other suggestions for the Utilities Committee or Department, you need to let them know today because they're going to file, and we're going to put it out to bid. So, I would want to make sure that if you had any questions, to either contact Mr. Shealy or myself on that. And I would like to approve this meeting.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to approve the committee report submitted by Counselor McLean. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 11014.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance co-charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that 1014 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 11014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 11014 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11114.
Amending the 2014 annual budget.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that Ordinance 11114 be passed on its first reading. Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 11114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 11114 has been passed on its first reading by a seven-to-zero vote. Ordinance 11214.
Authorizing the mayor to dispose of non-functional miscellaneous computers.
Mr. President. Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 11214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 11214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Ordinance 11214 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 11314.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction two police department vehicles.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that ordinance 113-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 11314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 11314 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 11414.
Authorizing and directing the auditor to pay Altara Inc. for emergency sewer repairs.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 11414 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 11414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 11414 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 11514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Insight Pipe Contracting.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that ordinance number 115-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 11514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 11514 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 11614.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Energy Management Solutions, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance number 11614 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 11614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
This, for people that don't know what we're talking about, this energy management solution is basically they're looking at all of our systems to see where we can get savings, or we will not pay them unless they find savings. They get their money from the savings that they find for us, not any other way. So I think that's a good deal.
Great idea.
It will help us in the future.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
And Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 11614 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Moving on to miscellaneous business, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending my middle daughter's graduation at the University of Findlay. And this Saturday evening, I'll be attending my youngest daughter's graduation at Lima Central Catholic. So I wanted to mention her since last time I mentioned the older girl. So I don't get in trouble. So I'm a very wise man not to get in trouble with my women.
That's right. I think she was right.
Yeah. And other than that, the only thing that I just want to remind people, be good to each other because I think that's important. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank all the people that came out last weekend to bring their trash and garbage to the dumpsters. Remember, we've got that for the entire month. Over certain other areas across the city. I tell you, I was real, it was very well received. We filled the dumpster by like an hour, hour and a half, and had another one on the way. It was amazing. So keep it coming. It all helps with the appearance of the city. And there'll be spots this, the rest of this month on Saturdays, from 9 till 12. Also, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to allow the absence of salary of Mr. Lowe.
Second.
The motion in the second is to approve the absence and salary of Counselor Lowe. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Tevin.
A couple of things this evening. There was a news story on WLIO within the last couple of weeks. Our part-time junk auto officer, Bob Hamel. And I really was glad to see that publicized.
Yep.
It showed, A, how serious he takes his job and how he approaches it, and the communication with the residents who have who are in violation of those ordinance, and how it can be dealt with, and they're given an opportunity to deal with it. But it also shows the problem we do have in the city. I mean, you look at the automobiles that were in that news story, and that becomes a quality of life issue for their neighbors and for the neighborhood, and removing those ISOS is a good thing. And I'm very happy with the efforts and look forward to the ongoing reporting of the activities. I think it's well worth it. The second item that I have this evening, I would like to refer the issue of farm animals and foul inside the city to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the issue of
Farm animals.
Farm animals and foul.
Inside the city.
Inside the city to the Neighborhood Concerns Committee. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, under discussion, this is an issue that three residents in my ward have a special interest in. And the intent in referring this to the committee is to give them a forum to discuss the research they've done and share it with city council. If city council, and I've told them this, if city council chooses to do something, you know, they will. It's a, it is a long shot. I think the council will change existing ordinances. But I do feel that these residents deserve a chance to be heard by the appropriate committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. I'd like to make a motion to refer exist, existing parking limitations that exist, excuse me, in the 600 block of Dewey Street.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer to parking issues in
Parking limitations.
Parking limitations on Dewey Street to the Traffic Commission. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Just a question, Mr. President. Ms. Adams, a concern that the limitations need to be loosened? I mean, what direction are you?
Well, I've been in discussion with the city engineer. And in his research, what brought the issue was in having driven Dewey Street, the east side has no parking 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except Sundays and holidays. The west side has no parking anytime. And the residents, and they're circulating a petition requesting, would like to see one or the other sides be allowed parking. You know, families have grown, more automobiles. The residents on the one side have shared driveways, and then they wye off into their carports or garages. And so they would like to be able to leave a car on the street, one side or the other. So that's what we would like to address. Thank you. I'd like to mention, Counselor McLean mentioned about the dumpster. This weekend, Hope Neighborhood is sponsoring a dumpster at Unity School from 9 to 12. And bring a utility bill or a driver's license showing a Lima address. Would be appreciated. I'm surprised no one has mentioned tomorrow to vote in the primary. I thought I'd be a parrot and be repeating. But I'd also like to take this opportunity, if I could, Mr. President, and ask Mr. Elstro to speak on State Issue 1.
I think the president will like that one.
No, I support it. I guess the question is, in the past, we have not allowed candidates to come forward and speak. I just want to make sure we're not getting into another shade of gray.
Well.
I mean, this is an issue, and we have supported it with a resolution, I believe. Schools, okay. No, go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel. Again, I just want to emphasize, I support, and you by resolution, as you've said, support State Issue 1. It is awfully important to the county engineer, the Public Works Director, and everyone in this field because this is where, for Allen County, about $1.1 million of our infrastructure dollars come from each and every year. And that is about $880,000 from grants and about $500,000 in loan dollars. Come back to our county each and every year because of the 29 years that the state of Ohio has found it, and electorate has found it fit to go through this process of selling bonds. It will not raise our taxes. They are repaid by the general revenue bond, but this is not to be a rate, an increase in our taxes. So please support it for better roads, bridges, water systems, and sewer systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elstro.
I would also like to extend my thanks to Officer Hamel. I've had some issues addressed in the 5th Ward concerning junk autos. One left on a lot. The daughter that owns it, the father lives down the street, came down just last week to mow the lot and found this vehicle sitting there. Traced it to an adjoining neighbor and asked him, would you please move it, and was informed, no. And calls were made, and Officer Hamel took the steps, and I drove by it day and later, and vehicle was gone.
Convincing.
Yeah. So, thank you. Now, you know, we had a responsible, and saving the city money mowing a lot. This father was, you know, there to mow the lot for his daughter and has through the season. I would like to discuss this alarm system if I could, Mr. President. One thing I think failed to mention, I too have gotten a letter years ago of a false alarm and was put on notice that any future false alarms that I too would be charged. But it was, I believe, and I don't know if the law director has, will be able to speak to this tonight, but could follow up later if necessary. I was told it was within the calendar year, then the slate is wiped clean again. Now, I don't know if it's from the year of the alarm, false alarm, or if it is in fact, now, if I get
Is it a calendar year or a rolling 12 months?
Right.
That's your question.
Right.
Mr. President, it's every six months.
Okay, great.
Is it a rolling six months? If I have one in May and one in next January, that's past the six months. Does it start over? It's a rolling six months. Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to get some clarification on that for the gentleman to know, so that, you know, it does go away. And I'm glad to know it's six months. I think when I got it, it was 12 months. So maybe there had been a change. Sounds like it. Again, everybody go vote tomorrow, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn.
Yeah, I got a couple of things here. I'm glad we brought that up. I just paid $25 because we had false alarms there. But I wish I could have told him that. He didn't understand how important when you send two police officers out there. You know, when they come out, there's a false alarm, a lot of things going on. So I'll try to explain a little bit more to him on that. Also, I appreciate that we had a marathon out in the South Side of Lima, rural marathon. We had a lot of people involved in that and had a real good time. I didn't get to run, though, but I support the people with the water. But they had, a lot of folks came out for that, and he ran from Third Street, he came up the new bridge, and he ran down Vine. So it was really nice, though, and I appreciate everyone who took part in that. Also, we will, again, this year, we'll take people voting. Mental health is a very big issue that we need. We hope everybody go out for that, you know, and I know a lot of talk been on that. Also, we're getting a lot of advertisement on our junk auto. You listen to the radio, people advertising to buy your car. So we at least go get the business and the money now. So before Hamel come out and take your car, you can sell it. You know, yeah, you can listen to the radio, people offering to buy your car from you. So that's really good there. We're giving the company, other folks, getting involved with our junk car auto, and it's great, very great. And I know Tom's bringing up about the chickens. I know Ms. Adams had the problem. I know it's two different problems there, but I know Ms. Adams addressed her problem there, her ward. And I'd like to hear the details, what they, they see, what they want to do, because I know she handled it really well. And, you know, the situation was kind of a little bit different. What he talking about, I don't know, but we'll find out when they come to the meeting. Also, we had some, I'm going to make a motion to send the Cable Road rural tracks to the Safety Services Committee.
Second.
The motion in the second is to refer the Cable Road crossing to the Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. And I had the opportunity to talk to the law director and also Howard about this. So whoever make the date, they would like to come out to that, explain what they're going to be doing, kind of work they're going to be putting together, working with the law director on this. And they already know Howard's trying very hard. Do we, do they know Lima, city council and our city officials doing all they can, but they want to take part into it. Okay, so make sure that date come about. Also, I want to thank our young kids. They did a fantastic job. We had a lot of paper around the General Dollar area that people just dropped everything around. The kids came out this weekend, cleaned it up. And I don't know who the guy donated all the food to the kids. I appreciate you so much. And 20 kids came out to clean that up because that is a very, very beautiful landmark. We got one of the beautiful everywhere I go. Our General Dollar is better than anyone. So, you know, we want to keep that looking good. So they got, went out and got some of the paperwork, all the paper around there and, you know, a lot of stuff around there. So I appreciate the kids doing that. And thank you. Don't forget to go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of thank yous. I want to issue a public thank you to Saul Allen. I've already thanked him privately here for helping out with a constituent that had a problem with a down pole in their backyard, and the wires were hanging pretty low to the ground. And so I went out to look at the poles, just to kind of identify what type of wires were there and who should be called. And so I decided to have Saul come out and look at them, be more knowledgeable than I was. And I called him on the Monday morning. Within two hours, he was out there talking to the family and identifying the pole, and everything was taken care of. So I appreciate his promptness and coming out and taking care of the constituent. And also, I want to thank Mr. Shealy and Mr. Camperla for their tour that I, that was given to me of the water and sewer facilities. It's such a huge, huge facility, and I was very, very much surprised about all the different locations on the east side, west side. And so I appreciate, you know, them taking the time to kind of get me familiarized with this facility. I know most people would say they're just doing their job here, but I really appreciate them taking the time, you know, and then the hospitality that was extended to me. And I really don't think they rushed me through it. It was a very intense tour of the facility, and I really appreciate them taking time. I know it's valuable for them to give me a tour, which has been, will be very, very helpful to me as a new counselor. So I really appreciate their efforts. The Westgate Neighborhood Association will meet on May 18. The speaker and presentation will be from the Autobine, and the meeting is 6:30 PM again on, on May 18 at Chamberlain-Huckley Funeral Home on Cable Road. And finally, as the Chair for the Neighborhood Concerns Committee, which dis, farm animals and foul will be in my area, I will not be entertaining any more jokes about foul animals and chickens here, as I have over the last several days with my name being mentioned in the paper. Everybody seems to have a lot of chicken jokes to tell me, so as I've been going here, no more jokes.
That's right.
That's all.
I'm just glad that wasn't in the form of a motion.
I'm just checking out my chicken jokes.
Yes. Pass this down.
You didn't hear me!
No, you didn't.
All that pressure. I'll leave that right here.
That's right.
That's right.
Well, now that we've all had a good cackle.
That was really nice.
I am, I do have a question. Amy, I've been made aware that there in the consolidated plan, schedule of meetings, that there is a council of the whole meeting scheduled, I believe in June at 5:30. That needs to be changed.
Okay.
Because I notified you that it can't happen at 5:30, and it needs to be at, I believe I said 6:30 or 7:00. Okay? The email was sent back in April or, sorry, actually in late March, when the first, discussion of the schedule came up. So that's going to have to be changed. I was not consulted prior to, for the calling of that committee meeting, which is a committee that I chair. And when I was made aware of it second-handedly, I sent an email to you and to Mr. Glenn that that meeting needed to be changed, because 5:30 isn't going to work. So if it's been published, if it's been, it's going to have to be amended, okay? The meeting won't start at 5:30.
We have a difficulty, and I apologize if there's been a miscommunication between